Welcome, everyone. Plunkton School Committee meeting for Monday, November 4th, 2019. This recording is not an official record, so please see the minutes for that. But it is for your enjoyment to watch if that's what you like to do. Your evenings? I'd prefer not, but there we go. Anyways, welcome. And we have a few visitors here. We have Mrs. Resmini and Ms. Pacinon. Pacinon. Okay. I had two choices, and I was gonna go with one, and I dove right in. And there was no water in the pool. And then also, we'd like to, we have our first wild reporter from the local paper here as well. So, moving right along, we have minutes from our last meeting on September 23rd.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from our September 23rd, 2019 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then for correspondence, we actually just received a letter from the Plunkton Teachers' Association to enter into negotiations for the contract that expires in 2020. So, we'll be working on that. I knew that was coming. For new business, we just wanted to talk about the subcommittees, just to make sure we had appropriate coverage while we have one of our members who's on sabbatical. So, Jason, did you have some thoughts?
I did. We're allowed to have three members on Union 31 with one alternate. Currently, I'm the alternate. Which Jill is one of our members to Union 31. I just thought it would make sense, in light of the fact we're making some pretty big decisions for our school committee, that we nominate Amy to Union 31.
Yeah.
Is it only two?
No, I think we, I think we already did it.
According to what we have on Union 31, it's John Williamson, Mike Anton, and Amy Hempel already, with you as the alternate.
All right. And I was misinformed, I must have looked at it incorrectly. That was my major concern with the organization, so...
We may, we may have changed that. Remember, there was some, we did some flipping around a couple times over the last year.
So, this is official for all, for all records?
Yes. Absolutely. The only two committees, sorry, now I need to put my copy, is negotiations. We may wish to have a different alternate. On negotiations, she is the alternate, so...
And we still, and we aren't reflecting the change that we made last time for her pilgrim?
Right, which is a temporary, right. And then policy, she's an alternate, but I don't think we need much of policy.
Amy and I obviously doesn't take a vote, but Amy would be the alternate for negotiations.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should have that.
Just better to keep me out of it, for full disclosure. I'm part of the Mass Teachers Association.
Yep.
Just wanna make sure that there's no questions, conflict of interest there.
Yep. Okay, so we'll update.
Yep, and PAC will update.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Easy enough. Superintendent update? Did you wanna take that?
Sure. So, we've already conducted a site visit for one of the candidates. A site visit is when committee members from our towns go and visit a candidate in their district. And we talked to various stakeholders about the candidate to try and get some perspectives on how they would best fit our school district as the next superintendent of schools. There's another site visit for one of the candidates tomorrow. Next week, we'll be holding interviews on the 12th at 6:00 in the library at the high school. We'll also be conducting interviews and potentially deliberation vote on the 13th, again at 6:00 at the high school library. We also do have schedule in case we can't come to a decision, or we decide to come back with fresh minds on the 14th at 6:00 in the high school library as well. So, we're getting to the final stretch of the search for our next superintendent of schools, and appreciate all the hard work that people have put into it. Unfortunately, we did have one candidate who pulled out of the race. He did send a very kind letter to myself and Jim Hardy. Jim Hardy is the individual who we've contracted with through MASC to help us with this search.
He has done a fantastic job. You know, this is the building that really is extremely well-maintained, you know, keeping everything up to date, so...
So, with that in mind, because I would highly doubt it's gonna become that many less years, or that there's gonna, that fixing rules is gonna become cheaper. So even if they do get more money, it's likely that will barely make up for how much more it costs. If, if you could even call it inflation. I mean, some of the price...
The letter is of a personal nature, so as of right now, I'm holding that back. He apologized for pulling out at the late meeting, but we still have finalists that the preliminary subcommittee brought forward to us, and we're going through the process.
Okay. So if you wanna try and find most of us next week, you can see us at the high school?
Pretty much.
All right. Onto unfinished business. Jason, it seems to be your night to talk.
So...
Playground.
Last Wednesday, Peter and I had a two-hour-long meeting with Joe Dufour from O'Briens and Son, and it was a very, very fruitful meeting, in my opinion. Joe did take into consideration some of our recommendations about integrating the second play swing set into the playground design, to try and save on some border materials and some fill. We had a discussion about trying to get a completely wheelchair-accessible swing, and Joe actually stopped us and gave us some, some good reasons why that might not be the angle to go to. Our hope for this playground is it will be fully accessible to all of our students. We're calling it ADA+. The swing that the wheelchair fits into usually takes about two people to get the wheelchair secured, balanced, and ready to go. And because it almost acts like a pendulum on its own, it becomes a safety risk, so many of the schools now have it completely gated off and separated from all the other students. So, in our attempt to be more inclusive, that really doesn't sound as inclusive as we were hoping. So, two of the swings, out of the two banks of swings, will be molded chair that has a harness on it that would need a transfer, so if somebody was in a wheelchair, they'd need assistance getting into it and buckled. But they could be right there with their friends, and those seats are also available to any other students as well, and if they're not needed for anybody with any physical disabilities. We did also ask about the playground structure itself. I know there was concern about that being a transfer structure as well, and we wanted to make that more integrated. So we're looking at adding a ramp to the playground structure to get the kids up on the higher ground with their friends, and also adding a feature. It's called a rock and sway. You can get into it, and the whole thing goes back and forth. There's some couches on the end, but there's also room for two wheelchairs at a time to be on that. So we might have to take away a couple of the features that were in the original design to make it a cost-neutral change. So then, we were discussing further, trying to make it more accessible, and Joe brought up a couple of things. One is adding some more rubber material to the ground, not only for accessibility, but also for safety reasons. There's actually some question of whether or not pine bark mulch is gonna be allowed in the future as a fill, just because if you don't keep up with it, it only takes three to six months for you to lose enough that it's no longer impact-resistant, doesn't absorb the energy of a fall. So we were looking at potentially adding up to 1,500 more square feet of rubber into the design. Now, where that money would come from would have to be the contingency fund that we would hold back until the end of the project, and that might be potentially where that gets spent out. And lastly, there's a ground-level merry-go-round that wheelchairs can pull into, that kids can run right into, that would be on the edge of the rubberized material. Peter and I really thought this might be the crown jewel of the playground, but the installation, the delivery, and the piece of equipment itself is about $37,000 more. So, Joe said that he could probably do the installation over the summer. That would make the most sense for his company, but also, that might give us the opportunity for one last go-around towards the school choice funds, for that one last piece of equipment. And we really felt that at that point, we would have a well-rounded playground that we could hang our hats on and hold on to for the next 20, 25 years.
Well stated. I took a note.
You took a rank note.
And the discussions with Joe, did that involve any of the site preparation?
So, no.
That's, that's the sort of open...
His site preparation is to dig down to depth, to level out reasonably his area. But we did bring up the fact that the ramp or the trail to the playground also has to be ADA-compliant. He had some ideas, said he'd be more than willing to work with us if we could get any in-kind donations. Someone from the community would be willing to come in with a backhoe and an excavator and maybe grade up that back hill to the level we need for maybe a switchback or a straight-down ramp. But yeah, that is not included. So again, we had $226,000, including our school choice funds and the CPC money. We are holding back the contingency fund. The current plan that he showed Peter and myself was about $201,000 as drawn. So again, we do have some extra money in that reserve fund. We'll have some money coming in from school choice fund, but we're really gonna have to work the angle of getting some in-kind donations or, you know, some community volunteers to come in and help us potentially with the grading.
Okay.
So, we have some homework to do. Peter and I, we're talking about some of the ways that this has to go through Plunkton at the townhouse. And Joe brought up a couple different funding mechanisms. He's on the state bid list, but he has two different codes under the state bid list that bring the cost down even a little bit more if you go through that process. But we're gonna have to work closely with Town Hall, potentially see how they want it ordered and how they want it put up.
But if he's on the state bid list, we don't have to go out to RFP with this?
We don't have to, but again, just wanna make sure that we're checking with the townhouse and seeing how they, what they're comfortable with and how they'd like us to proceed, just so we're not dropping it on their lap, asking for the check when we're ready to go. I just wanna double-check and make sure everything is, is lining up correctly. There was some sort of consortium through the state that the library and town is part of, but Peter couldn't find our school or the town as part of this consortium. And this is a list of state bid contractors, not only the product, but also the labor. So none of it would have to go directly out to bid if we went through the consortium. So, we might need to look into that and talk to the selectmen about getting signed up for that consortium.
I think I'd start with, I'd start with Liz.
With Liz.
Yeah. Ask her to dig into that.
Could I just ask about the consortium? How was that run? Who runs the consortium?
It's run by the state. Peter and I had never heard about it before until Joe brought it up, but it's, it's one of his contracts that he's in with the state on their state bid list. So, I don't know exactly how it works or why it's set up this way, but municipalities or individual departments within municipalities can sign up to be on this consortium, and then that changes the structure of how you have to go out to bid for not only materials, but also the labor.
Right. For us, being on the state bid list does not exempt us from doing the bidding process. We still have to do bidding. It's just, it's an avenue for us to pursue. But with some consortiums, what's happened is they've already done all the vetting, so that it's already gone out to bid for each individual piece of equipment. So then, if you use that, you then don't have to do the traditional bidding.
Right. So that, once we know if we're gonna proceed with Joe, and it's becoming more and more clear through the conversations we're having, that this is probably the direction we wanna go with, we can reach out to Liz and we can start that conversation with the town to make sure the funds are lined up in time for us to start.
The funds should be, because they're from, they're from a separate, I mean, they're from money that already is there. This is, this is not an issue of when tax receipts are received. That money was already certified money that was in there at the point of town meeting.
Right.
It was not monies that were coming in and coming in from the state match for this year that will be available later. So, I don't, I don't think that's so much the concern. It's more about making sure that we have the opportunity to pursue it off of the list if we can.
Exactly.
Because that, that's, one saves a fair amount of time, a fair amount of work, and it also provides a certainty with respect to the costs.
Exactly.
Because we could go out to bid and it could come in, I don't know, twice as much as what we've actually expected, AKA water, or four times or five times as much. So, you know, it's just given the, given the timing, if it's, if we're able to deal with that, then it's already sort of set.
So the direction, I guess I'm looking for from you tonight is, are you comfortable with us proceeding with that level-ground merry-go-round potentially coming out of our school choice funds that we're receiving in the 2019, 2020 school year?
How many, how many, did we get, seven?
The estimate that's out right now is $40,000 for the year that would be coming in, and it comes in monthly, so it's not like we have to wait till June to get it. So it does come every, every month.
Right.
We have six currently. So we have $30,000 to share.
That's what we had as well, and I wouldn't expect it then.
Okay. So, I mean, I think, I'm, from my perspective, I'm, I'm fine with, with doing that as long as we're not spending any additional town funds.
No.
And I think that, you know, we need to make sure that we keep contingency for contingency as well. So as long as, you know, if we have to go over a little bit because it makes sense for the playground we promised through CPC?
Right.
Then, you know, then I'm certainly fine if we're gonna fund the other piece of it.
Okay. Mike, are you okay with us proceeding with plans that would include that merry-go-round using the school choice?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess the second question is, if we finish the project and we still have the contingency fund available to us, that rubberized surface would give us another 1,500 square feet. It's cost about $17 per square foot. That would allow greater accessibility around the perimeters of the play structure for anybody who is, you know, on crutches or in wheelchairs, mobility impaired. But it also would increase our impact zone around any of the high structures and potentially save us from when they might change the regulations and say that the wood chips aren't allowed anymore. I know that you would think that we would be grandfathered in, but Peter and I heard some stories about playgrounds that have been on the books for quite some time getting challenged, and the state agency that oversees playgrounds telling them that they had to resurface and put rubber in, additional rubber in.
I'm sure they provided funding to help it then.
So this is why, when we're looking at it at this stage, if we have the contingency funds left at the end, we would love to be able to disperse them if, if it makes sense for that additional rubberized surface.
So what I would suggest we do is, I would suggest that we reach out to Mr. Russo?
Okay.
And perhaps go have a sit-down with the committee, just to give them our thoughts and gauge their, their input on that. I think, provided the money is there and available, and we aren't gonna have any cost overruns and that the project gets finished, I think there's some long-term sense to the town that we make that reasonable edit to what we were doing in order to, one, reduce long-term maintenance, but also reduce long-term liability, both from an accident happening out there, but also from the chance that the rules change. But I think that it's probably makes sense for us just to give them an update as to where we are and all that. So, we can figure that out.
Sounds good. I'm glad that we're able to update them. It was getting a little frustrating there for a while.
Yep.
And you know, Joe, Joe came back up to the surface, not just accidentally. Peter and I searched back into some emails, and there was a little bit of confusion about who was supposed to reach out to who next. So we decided it would be us, and he reached right back out to us very quickly, and we got right back on track. So, glad we, we took that chance and, and reached back out. It was a great meeting we had.
Sounds good.
Excellent. Thank you for that, Jason. Thanks for all the work, for both of you.
Thanks, Peter.
For hanging out, a couple extra hours after work is over one day.
My pleasure.
Power lines, they're still there. So that's, that's, I guess, good in some way.
Yes, I suppose. Looking back at my notes, we're still waiting for them to take down a tree, then I'm gonna touch the wires until what they get, the huge tree has been removed. And that was like a six-month backlog. I did reach out thinking that perhaps somebody could get the ball rolling a little faster. I sent an email to Chief Clancy to see if perhaps he could nudge them in the right direction, get things moving a little bit quicker, and I'm hoping that that would be one of the help out.
Well, at a certain point, we're starting to pull as to whether we have to fix the wires, or we put them underground, and which happens first.
Good point.
I don't know where that is. I'll have to, I'll follow up with Liz just on that conversation we had. So, okay. Standing committees' reports, administrative review, I don't think we have to do anything on that.
Not on the 11th, right?
Okay.
And we went over the four contracts.
Yep.
Everybody was in agreement with them.
Oh, that's right. We had that.
So, so now we just, we have to bring them to...
The joint committee.
To joint committee.
Right.
We just gotta schedule that.
Yeah.
Or if we're gonna do it before the Silver Lake meeting.
We could try that. I wasn't sure. We wanted to try to get it amid the superintendent interviews and this thing, so I thought we'd sort of just table it for a little bit, maybe till right before the next Silver Lake meeting is a great idea, Mike.
Yeah. I mean, it would go pretty quick, because we already did the...
It would be quick.
We just had Silver.
Yeah. So, thank you. It's a great suggestion.
Okay. Negotiations, more to come on that, since we're gonna start that process up. Union 31, we've been, from the union perspective, involved in superintendent search, so members have been spending a fair amount of time with that, and more to come on that at our next meeting. PAC?
So I couldn't make the last PAC meeting because we were having a joint meeting between Silver Lake and Union 31, but they are giving up the hatch building in Pembroke, and they're moving their office down to Plymouth, where the Home from Academy is, into cost savings of over $2,000 a month to PAC, but it's also a much better facility. So, in addition to that, PAC has also printed their annual report, and I'll add to it next week to do some of the highlights.
So they're moving into the, into the Academy building?
They are.
Yeah, okay. Good. Policy?
I'd like to make a motion to weigh in the actual reading of the policies.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to accept as a first reading IKFBA IMG-1 JBJLCD.
Do I have a second?
Second.
In favor? Aye. Okay. Capital improvement? I don't think we have anything addition on that. Legislative?
So, I feel like a broken record, but it seems like there's gonna be some major movement in funding education at the State House. It is largely focused on the areas that the Foundation Budget Review Commission identified several years ago. ELL students, low-income students, some special ed costs to districts and insurance costs to districts. It does look like a lot of the cities and some towns that have had major difficulties adequately funding their, their students' educations will receive significant funds over the next seven years. Some towns, by my estimation, will receive an additional $4,000 to $5,000 per pupil over that seven-year period. Unfortunately, we don't really fall into most of those categories. I guess we should be happy that we have a town that can sustain its own educational system. We look to get about $35 per student per year for the next seven years. One area where we might benefit, especially since we are in charge of all special ed costs from 2.9 to 22, as the Plunkton School Committee, is in the area of circuit breaker. They've redefined some categories that are now available as per circuit breaker, and even included some transportation items potentially in those recoupable funds. Again, this legislation hasn't passed yet, but this is what they're talking about up at the State House. I have reached out to our state rep and our state senator. Rep. Lynadra has been very accommodating with my request. She signed onto a letter earlier last spring asking that our town be included in a group that got a $100 per pupil minimum increment, and she was very helpful in trying to move that forward with Rep. Josh Caldera to Duxbury. Doesn't look like we won on that, but we'll, we'll keep pushing at the State House and advocating for our kids and our communities as well.
Okay. And we did have signal signature warrants during this time period?
Yes. John Williamson came into the administration office on Monday, October 28th, and signed 10 warrants totaling $199,123.85. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right. Do we have any update from Casa?
I missed the last meeting. I did reach out to Sarah, and she didn't have time to have meeting minutes yet, so hopefully next meeting I should have one.
They did have the, they had the harvest fair.
They had the harvest fair. They just did a big fundraiser.
Okay. Great. Mr. Venido?
Thank you very much. If I may, I'd like to introduce the holder to my right. This is Mrs. Judy Hansen. She is our new office secretary. She's done an outstanding job. If you call the school, you will most likely speak to her, at least first. No, we're glad to have Judy. She's doing a great job.
Thank you.
Getting to my report, Nalabat has changed. Our enrollment is holding steady at 219. The biggest change on there is that Ms. Gerard is now Mrs. Pratt. She got married last month. Congratulations to her. Some important dates for November. We have an in-service day tomorrow, no school. I sent a note out today. The 11th is Veterans Day, no school. On the 12th, Dan and I are doing our day or coffee hour from 10:15 to 11:15. I've heard back from a lot of parents that want to attend, but for a number of reasons, work being the primary one, that they can't attend. So I reached out to Michaela Gill, who put me in touch with somebody at the AV department. We're hoping to video this and have it available on our website. We'll see how that plays out, but it's a, it's a really, it's good information, and it's just, we can't get it up to a lot of people. So, we'll see how that goes. November 18th, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. November 15th is the fourth-grade field trip to the Weir River Farm. On the 18th, we have picture retakes. On the 20th, we have our annual Thanksgiving feast, starting at 11:30. November 27th is an early feast, 12:00. No lunch served. I'll send a note. On the 28th and the 29th, Happy Thanksgiving, no school.
Okay.
It's a very choppy month.
I was gonna say, it's a shame they have to go a whole week of school. All right. Christine?
Thank you. In your package tonight, you do have a copy of the financial. Fortunately, it's, things are still pretty unmedalable. We're off to an awesome start without major crises happening. Everything that we're aware of, we have quantified by using an encumference. Just a couple of things on page three of your detail. Just past the middle of the page, under Special Education Transportation, there was a deficit of $11,000. Oh, I'm sorry, it's not in your packages. It's on your screen. You have the screen.
Electronic package.
Oh, yeah, sorry. We have incumbent for all the students that we're aware of, and there was a change in placement, that's why we have the deficit there. And you will also see a deficit under Special Education Tuition. That is before any use of circuit breaker funds. So with circuit breaker funds, we will get through the year with a surplus there. And then we're, I'm still expecting a balanced out of District Vocational, where we're counter for all the students that we have knowledge of right now, and we're still expecting a surplus. That could change if any, if any enrollment changes, but I'll keep you up to date on if I know anything about that. That's it, unless there are any questions.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Jill?
So tonight, I will present on behalf of Tietten Elementary School the 2019 MCAS results. Mr. Venido is gonna put the presentation up on board for our, our guests, but I believe everyone has a copy of the presentation in their packets. You may recall, it just takes a couple minutes. It usually takes, yeah, there, there it goes. You may recall last year, we went over... You may recall last year, we went over the point system for the new accountability system. We went over that in great detail. This year, there'll be a few reminders about the new system, but we're not gonna go over as many finer points about the system in general. So you may recall, there are several indicators for non-high schools, achievement, growth, and chronic absenteeism. We would also have a weighting in the area of English language proficiency, if we had enough students to make the subgroup category, which we do not this year. Chronic absenteeism is defined as a student being absent more than 10% of the school year. So for a student to be absent 18 or more days, that would land them in the chronic absentee And there is a point system based on targets set by the state for all students, and then for the lowest performing. If you recall, last year, I showed you a chart where we received points for all students in English, math, science, for example, and achievement in terms of growth. We received points for chronic absenteeism. But we also had goals or targets for the lowest performing students as well in those categories. And those points combined led us to a weighting or a category that we landed into this year. Denit made substantial progress towards its targets and is in the 73rd percentile, meaning it did better than 73% of all other schools. This is not just elementary schools, this includes middle schools, but it does not include high schools. And we speculated that eventually it may include all schools, but we're not there yet, so that may be a future potential change. There was 100% participation rate on all three tests. There was high growth in English and math for the category of all students and for all eligible subgroup categories. So while we don't have students in every subgroup or enough students in certain categories for that to be listed, in all of the eligible categories, there was high growth in ELA and math. And Denit exceeded its target in Science, Technology, and Engineering in Grade 5 for all students. So we're really happy to celebrate those accomplishments at Denit. In terms of growth, Denit had high growth in ELA and math, and you'll notice here are two of the subgroup categories, lowest performing and high needs, very important. And you see right across the board, we have typical high growth for all students, lowest performing, high needs in ELA and in math, and some really high growth over there in math, lowest performing, and that's, that's really quite an achievement. So just to remind you that we no longer have the advanced proficient needs improvement categories, we now go from not meeting expectations all the way to exceeding expectations, and I provided you with a description of each of those achievement levels. And once again, Massachusetts educators worked by grade and subject-specific groups to make cut score recommendations, particularly in Grade 10 and in Grade 8 Science. But for elementary schools, I wanted to note that Grade 5 Science STE set their cut scores and standards this year. Here's a chart which depicts achievement for grades 3 through 6, and Denit Elementary School outperforming the state, 72% meeting or exceeding expectations in English Language Arts versus 52% at the state level. And math, 62% versus 49% at the state level, meeting or exceeding expectations. In Science, we are at 68% versus the state at only 47% meeting or exceeding expectations. So in the past, we have used percentages of achievement scores to help define where we stand in terms of achievement, but the state is also recommending that we use the average scale scores to compare students over time or to compare our subject matter scores over time. This is because it's a more precise measure. In addition, I wanted to let you know that the state has defined improving as gaining two or more scaled score points. Now whether or not that's statistically significant depends upon the size of the sample. But for our definition, two or more scale points is what is defined as improving. So here is English Language Arts, and over to the left, you see the bars with the percent of students by achievement level. Grade 3, excellent results on the far left, you can see most of the chart is in blue and green, which is what we love to see. And Grade 6 is over on the far right. But I want to draw your attention to the change in average scale scores, because that's the real area that I wanted to focus on tonight, and I wanted you to be careful not to tally up that bottom box as a tally box on the far lower right corner. We're reading it from left to right, and we're going from 2017 to 2019. You can see we scored over 14 points in Grade 3. We're up by 6.7 points in Grade 4. And in Grade 5, we're up by 7 points, and then we had a dip in 6th grade, down by 7 points. But we had an overall increase of 7.7 points from 2017 to 2019. So that's really some very positive achievement results over time. And then in math, again, to the far left is Grade 3, to the far right is Grade 6 on the bar graphs, and you see some more gains in Grades 3 and 4 from 2017 to 2019. Then you see a dip in Grade 16 and an overall decrease of only .5. So while we didn't lose a great deal of points overall in this category, you do see a slight overall decline in Grades 3 through 6 in average scale scores, so that's something we'll be looking at. There was the piloting of materials last year. We have begun to implement a new math program this year, and the teachers have received training and will continue to receive training. In fact, tomorrow, there'll be a professional development day where math teachers will be participating in guided math with Dr. Nikki Newton and Pearson training for the new program that Melissa has been coordinating and working very hard on. And then in Science, Technology, and Engineering, I'm not supposed to compare the legacy test, this is just to remind you that prior to last year, students were taking a legacy test. But again, remember, the standards for the new Next Generation MCAS are much higher.
Jill, you might stand on this one for a sec?
Yes, sure.
All right, so, just to break the presentation for a minute. When this data came out, when you sent your slides to the committee members, I went through it very carefully, and I was thrilled at the outcomes. I was really impressed with ELA, with mathematics, but I know last year, I kind of sounded an alarm over our 2018 MCAS scores with a significant amount of our kids getting needs improvement. The data from this year, and I know they're different cohorts, I was extremely impressed with. And I know one year doesn't make a trend either way, but obviously some time and effort was put into this, and I just wanted to make it equally as well known how happy I was to see us moving in that direction. So I know it's a K to 6 effort, so it's nice to see the hard work of our teachers and our students and our administrators coming through. And again, it's just a test, it's just a couple days a year, it's only one metric we use. But having 73% in needs improvement in a town like Plimpton and a school like Denit really scared me, and to see the data come back a little bit more break our way was a welcome sight, so thank you. I appreciate all the time and effort that everybody put into trying to correct course.
Thank you, and I'm sure everyone appreciates that, because I, again, we were alarmed, but we also didn't want to jump to conclusions or make any rash decisions or changes, and so we were very thoughtful in terms of making sure that we continued along the path of taking a look at what the data did and did not mean at a very particular level, and then making sure that our science classes are aligned with the state's standards, that they reflect best practices. And, you know, I'm going to talk to you in a minute about next steps. One of the things that Melissa's going to be doing this upcoming year is working with science teachers from across the district, so that they're not working in isolation, doing some curriculum mapping, making sure that all science classes are in fact aligned, and if something is working particularly well in certain areas, that we begin to share those types of insights.
I think it is good to look at this legacy test, but looking at those three years, I mean, you see so much of a swing, and I think one of the things important to remind folks, particularly that are watching, who are not sort of living this on a day-to-day basis, is that even though we've had an incredible growth, and the two of you are dealing with one of the largest class sizes for kindergarten in recent memory, probably, maybe not as, not so far back, but we don't have big classes here. And so the numbers can change because the moon was in the wrong place in the sky that day, but it also has to do, you have a limited population and limited sample size.
So it's more of a swing.
And so it's much more important to look at things over a period of time, not that that isn't, you know, a big bar that was up last year, but it's so varied, even for those three years across all of the bars, that...
It's unusual.
That it, some of it is just that, you know, a couple kids change the number dramatically, and it's just a bad day, and that's that. So it is great to see, and it's a great result, so I agree with everything Jason said on that. But I always have to point that out, it's the statistics part of my college that keeps throwing that out there.
Sometimes schools can run into problems too, when they're transferring from one legacy, from one test to another. So there's this overlap. Do I stay with the old standards? Do I move towards the new? Did I choose the right standards to focus on this year? And so there's some of that as well.
Well, and it doesn't mean that they didn't get taught science that year.
Right.
It just wasn't the science that was on the test.
No.
Right? I mean, you know, that's, you know, there's, all of these things come in to create what happens in any anomaly year.
When the teachers sit and meet and they look at some of the data, they look at some of the questions, particularly in math classes, for example, I've heard teachers say, or even in science, how much time they spent on a particular subject and how they didn't spend as much time on another, and yet there were eight questions on this and only one question on that, and so it's, you really can't teach toward, to the test.
No.
What you can do is do your best to teach to the standards, and having teachers discuss about what's most important for students to know and be able to do, and focus on those areas, because it is, it changes, and so teachers sometimes can rather say, well, I know why we didn't do as well on that, because that came after the test, or because we spent a very, little bit of our focus was on that, and we spent all this time on this, assuming this would be a bigger focus area.
I bet my own kids come home and say, yeah, there was like, all these questions on this, and we didn't, you know, and that's just what happens.
Yeah.
Great.
So the teachers, grade-level teams, schools, have been looking at subject data, they've been looking at grade-level data, they've been looking at student-level data, which sometimes we talk about, but we really can't investigate here because it's far too personal and identifiable. But the teachers are going to be looking at student-level data and creating plans for students who may be struggling in a particular area or in multiple areas. With the new definition of the lowest 25%, that's gonna be a continual group of students that changes, that teachers are going to be, need to be aware of, and begin to pinpoint areas that they can help support or provide interventions for them. We always look to see if there's gaps in our curriculum in terms of what is and is not being taught, and why that may be, and how we can do a better job of teaching something. So we may be teaching it, but are we teaching it well? And is there a way that works particularly well in a class that a teacher's willing to share, or that we know from research might be a better way of approaching something? Some other things to think about, ways that we can support our students, chronic absenteeism, and again, you're working with smaller numbers, but it did rise from 5.1% to 6.8%. And we don't want students coming to school with the flu, but we want to remind parents and the public that being in school is important, we want your students, if they're healthy, to be in school, and it does count towards our accountability. So we don't want to belabor that, but we, some people may not realize that.
But again, we're talking about 18 days.
Yes, which is, and some students have medical reasons why this may be, and so we're not, we're not looking to second-guess that as much as we're just reminding those students who can come to school, who are healthy and feeling good, we want you here and we miss you, so come to school. We have been working on self-confidence for a few years now, and we continue to focus on two additional competencies this year. We have been working on the classroom implementation of these strategies, and so we would hope that this emphasis on relationship building, social awareness, self-management, self-awareness, those types of competencies would overall not only help us with issues such as chronic absenteeism, because students want to come to school because it's a great place to be and they have a great relationship with people, but also are going to help us in our classrooms so that it facilitates the learning or acquisition of math, or science, or English, or art, whatever the case may be. In mathematics, we have adopted a new math program, which is more closely aligned, but Melissa will remind you that no math program is perfectly aligned to the standards. We are working with professional development provider, Dr. Nikki Newton. In the summer, we had a number of teachers working on curriculum mapping, and Melissa has also brought back Pearson to help us with program implementation. In English Language Arts, Melissa will be including teachers in writing strategies, professional development. Title 1 has already begun provided targeted support for those students who are eligible in the lowest 25%. And as I mentioned before, in the area of science, we're gonna be working across the districts with teachers who teach science, so that they can begin creating curriculum maps and aligning to make sure that we are aligned with the state frameworks in all areas, and to begin sharing best practices. Any questions?
I was gonna wake up. I'm good?
So I think there's a lot to celebrate, and we're certainly very happy. The name of this game, though, if I can play the Bill Belichick of MCAS, is that we need to improve in all facets of the game, and if I could sound like Bill and...
We're glad you don't show up.
Be as nasty. So we don't, we don't want to rest on our laurels here, because really, it is about that continuous improvement.
Well, and everything changes as it goes.
Yes.
You can't just, it's a continuing, everything's moving.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
It's all yours.
Thank you. So I wanted to introduce Melissa Farrell. As you know, every year as we're building the budget, I bring in Melissa, and I'll be bringing in Steve Pellow and Marie Gravel to talk about the portions of their work that impacts the budgets for each of the schools. So Melissa, I just want to remind you, is our K6 curriculum coordinator, and Amy, I'm not sure, this actually may be the first time you met her, I'm sorry, I just am realizing that. So Melissa is our K6 curriculum coordinator, so she's responsible for coordinating the curriculum in all four elementary schools. There's two schools in Kingston, one in Plimpton, obviously, and one in Halifax. So it's seven grades, all subject areas, and so it's a job that, you know, she's sitting around with not a lot to do or to work on. She's also our Title 1 director, and the thing that everyone should know is, this is also her birthday tonight.
Oh, geez.
We're celebrating her birthday.
I just wanted you to know, she's missing going out with her family to be here to celebrate with you. So we really respect everything that Melissa has bought to the position, and she's worked very hard. So she's gonna be here tonight to talk a little bit about some of the impacts of her work and its impact on the budget as well, some of the changes we've made. She did a single, she did a double-sided handout, which you received as your, in your documents. If you would like, I have a hard copy, if you would like to look at it. Is that coming? Thank you.
So I, each year, I enjoy asking to come in with a little bit of an overview of the Title 1 grant. I think it's kind of important this year for you guys to focus and see on it. If you look at the funding, we've gone from $344,000 in 2017 to $205,000 for the fiscal year '20 grant. So we lost about $120,000 out of the grant. But what I can point out is that we also lost Jean Cuja at Denit this year. She retired and left, so that was a little bit of a hit too. We have replaced that position with a wonderful person named Bonnie... We have replaced that position with a wonderful person named Bonnie Judge, who has come in, and I can say, transitioned seamlessly. And is working with Martha McBride very diligently to continue the support for students. So, we've able to, I give the numbers that we report to on the Sims. Last year, we were at 17 students that were being serviced, not including kindergarten students, and this year, we're at 15. So, we're trying to maintain services where the only budget that has happened to Dennehy has been a decrease in the hours by four hours a week with Bonnie's position. But the reason for that is because we're using those funds to support K-3 teachers working in the writing grant. So, the teachers that are participating part of that grant, it's a larger grant that was awarded to Kingston and Halifax, because they qualify due to their size. So, I didn't want to leave Dennehy out. So, Pete and I had a, Pete and I had a conversation. I said, "What if, with Jean leaving, why don't we look at transitioning some of those funds, so that we can stipend the teachers from Dennehy to have the same roles and the same opportunities as teachers that are receiving stipends through the grants in Halifax and Kingston?" So then, so Megan is one of our teachers who's going to participate in. And so, we'll have eight after-school meetings that will meet with a consultant, a writing consultant, and then there will be opportunities also to visit classrooms throughout the district to see sort of this writing work and process. So, that's kind of exciting. But the grant is still going strong, and we'll see where it goes. We, we met today, and we're writing a summer school grant to try and replace the funding that is typically used to provide the summer school, with a different grant from DSE. So, my goal is that although we have this $120,000 cut, this year is going to go through, like usual, typical, and then we'll revisit it in January, when we know the numbers again. But I will encourage Dennehy to think about the position of Bonnie Judge. She's not a very costly item, but I would hate to see that sort of continue to cut over the time. But we're allowed to do professional development, Nikki Newton, that's coming, and it's actually paid out of the fiscal year '19 grant for the district. So, that opportunity came out of the Title One, we're continuing our family engagement nights, I haven't heard word on the theme at Dennehy yet, but that usually is coming soon. I don't know, we're missing some of our team players on that piece, turn of the leaf and things of that nature. But we'll hopefully continue the summer program. I, I would like to try and see us continue to do a consolidated Dennehy and Halifax program, and sort of how we work that will come out, but that's worked well, to combine both the schools and do that for staffing, for student supports there. We did do an online reading incentive program this summer for students in grade three through five, where there were two reading teachers who were monitoring online practice, and we actually brought those reading teachers from Kingston to Dennehy the other day, and Peter and I went around and introduced the teachers to the students that they've been working with virtually all summer long, to congratulate them on their hard work, and hand out some surprises and some acknowledgement of their hard work. And so, we'll continue those pieces. One of the biggest transitions in the Title One grant for this year, though, is really working to create data tools for teachers to use, so that we have one platform for all of our data. So, classroom grades, our benchmark assessments, our MCAS data, our attendance data, IEP, ELL status, all of that can be accessed for teachers in one spot, just connected with Power School and our student information system. So, we've been playing around and doing that, Peter attended a training on that, but it falls in line with the expectations and the requirements of the grant, and is a tool that we've been able to utilize K-12. So, we're going to continue to sort of like, use that piece of it to try and streamline our data. Our DIBLs data is in there, too, for our younger students, so trying to do that. But that's, that's Title One, where it stands, and I'll know more in January of the state. And then, on the other side of it, is the curriculum side, and that kind of goes over that, we do, we have this new math curriculum implementation, K-5. We are aligned K-5, and we are going strong. We did do a ton of work this summer with the mapping. We completed the maps for kindergarten through fifth grade, and disseminated them all out to the staff. So, not only did teachers get a new curriculum, but they also got a document that aligned the curriculum to the standards and pasted for the school year. Whether they're perfect or not, you know, they are living documents that will bend and weave, and I had a call with the consultant just on Friday, where, and I sent a survey out to staff to sort of get some feedback on that, but we'll continue to work with those and build in also some more assessments, some pre- and post-assessments into that process. We are doing Alexia pilot at Kingston Elementary School, that I'm trying to figure out how to work at Dennehy. It's a financial thing, because it's a costly per pupil expense. So, we do, I would love to have it for all of our K-2 students, but it doesn't make sense to buy it as a site license at Dennehy. So, those are some of the things that are in the works, but you will see some budget numbers for me to try and get Alexia K-2, as a consistent Tier One. We have a lot of technology in the district, and as my job becomes more technology-based, what I'm realizing is that technology's phenomenal in the classroom, but we need to have effective tools for the students to use. And what is happening is that over time, those effective tools aren't free. You know, so balancing sort of the curriculum side and the instructional tools and the cost of that. Our sixth grade is social studies, is piloting a new ancient civilizations curriculum. What actually happened is that McGraw-Hill was really nice enough to let us borrow some books for the year that we like, and we would like to purchase, so they're in, they'll come into next year's budget, so this year, we have them for a pilot basis. But teachers worked summer long, creating maps and developing units for that, and are super excited about the transition. They're meeting again tomorrow to continue work on that, so that's kind of exciting. Fifth grade is going to start a social studies pilot, that actually has their first meeting this Friday, where we're piloting an on, completely online digital curriculum. It's something called Newsela, and so, we will work with teachers and sort of see if that's a way to go. It's hard to get from the Civil War to civil rights, all in a year. So, when you have a curated collection of primary resources that's accessed digitally, I think that's kind of the new way to look at it, and so, we'll get some feedback from teachers and see how they want to proceed on that, but that's kind of exciting. And that gives us the opportunity to pilot the Newsela in grade six through eight. It's another online digital curriculum that allows kids to access and read documents, and then they take comprehension quizzes on it, and then as kids answer those, it levels them. So, I, as a teacher, might assign an article out to students, but the program will automatically level it to the reading level, where the content is the same. So, kids get the exact same content, but it's actually an accessibility level, and it will grow and change with them. So, the adaptive technology in education, where students don't even know, or they're not able to even realize the differentiation that's occurring, because it's happening embedded within the technology. So, we're playing around with that, and sort of seeing where it goes. There's, there's a ton of stuff out there, and it's really a matter of curating it and deciding what's an effective tool. That connects with some other technology tools in the classroom. And then, the Curriculum Mapping Project, we did meet with fifth grade science, that was the first meeting, and that was two weeks ago. They met, and we started to map out fifth grade. They have another meeting date set for December 12th. We've talked about that it's great to see the growth that we've seen in fifth grade, but we know that next year, we have to be even better. And part of that has to be some expectations on what is, what are the guarantees coming out of third grade? What are the guarantees coming out of fourth grade? What are the guarantees coming out of fifth grade? But what, what can I, as a fifth grade teacher, refer back to as having occurred in fourth grade? So, the fifth grade teachers, really on their own encouragement, said, "We want to make a list of guarantees. We want every fourth grader to have this lab, this lab, and this lab. These are things that we want to have as set expectations." And so, we're going to work on that piece of it, and that will sort of bend and weave into multiple grade levels, and so, we're starting with fifth grade science, fifth grade social studies, sixth grade social studies is in the works. K-5 math is done, and we'll just keep chugging along as we can go, and then, and then next year, we'll start a literacy focus, sort of diving into our literacy curriculum and doing a little bit of a self-assessment. So, that's why you don't sort of see that piece on here. We do have the Early Literacy Grant, we talked about that. And then, the last thing that we did is we transitioned to a new de-escalation training, called QBS Safety Care, which is our restraint training for the district. And we're, it's a better program, that better aligns with the district and the work of behavior, our social-emotional curriculum. So, it's been exciting to sort of support that transition in the district. And so, we have a training going on for that for tomorrow, and then, we're actually going to do a training here, in this room, on November 25th, to get more people in the district up and going on that. And then, the bottom thing here is some budget numbers for you to look into, or just keep in mind, as I'm building the budget this week. These are big numbers for, we need to renew our Reading Street at a cost of $8.50 per student. That's our online platform for the reading curriculum. I'd like us to look at updating our Massachusetts textbooks that we use in third grade. I still need to get a little bit of feedback from teachers as to how much they're using them, but they're just falling apart. They're a 2002 copyright, and many of them have covers that just don't attach anymore. And then, the Newsela is something that would be a six through eight adoption, so budgeting for me right now is kind of tough. I have a meeting on November 8th, and I'm going to meet with the sales rep to try and understand what that cost would look like, to spread that out, because it's, it's not just between the elementary schools, it would also be between the middle school as a shared cost. So, looking at those pieces. And then, social studies and the math is up for renewal in sixth grade, and that's would be another six or seven-year subscription. And that, we're not looking for anything new and different there, we just, our subscription has ended, our student accounts on the online platform are gone, and so, it's time to renew that as a sort of standard practice. But overall, our total textbook line item cost for next year should be less, or about the same, because we split the math. So, we split the math in two years in this district, this is the only one that's split. So, I think it'll look about the same as what it did for last year, but no, no major scary increases in it. All right, I'm done.
Yeah.
Where's my...
You had it at lunch.
I did, I had a donut, like this way.
Is there any, do we hope, I mean, I know that, you know, you've come in and you've done a fantastic job of trying to sort of get all this stuff together and figure out what we need. Do we hope to get to a point where the renewals for all of the things that we need to renew, like with books not having covers and pages not so useful, that that becomes more of a recurring cost, that, you know, you sort of know that that's built into the budget more so than, all of a sudden, here's a chunk, and here's a chunk?
So, my, it's hard, because some things are more expensive than other things.
Right.
I mean, in my dream world, there would just be a set textbook line item, and I would know, oh, well, this is, this is what the textbook line item is, and I'm either going to buy the math over these two years, and I know I have the two years to do it, or it's going to be one year. I am working, I do have a spreadsheet to just map it out, so that we're not going to get hit one year with like, math and another big item. I want to do more of this curriculum mapping work. Science is a perfect example. We have a science textbook. You know, it, it fit the bill when we needed to move to the new frameworks, and it's given teachers a starting point and a launching point. I always argue that your textbook is 51 percent of your teaching resources. The other 49 percent needs to come from something else, and a lot of that needs to come from the students that are in front of you, and you reading what they need.
Right.
And then, researching best practices to support that. You know, I like the new math program a lot, because it embeds some of those supplemental resources that we were encouraging teachers to use, it actually embedded into it. So, it's sending the right message about how to differentiate your instruction and use these other resources that aren't just all written by Pearson. But, you know, I wish that I could say that things have stabilized. I feel like with the rewrite of the social studies curriculum, so the ELA is 2018, the science is 2016, the math is 2018, or 17, somewhere, we're getting a little bit of a stabilization with the frameworks. I don't think we'll see another drastic change in social studies in like, 10 or 15 years. You know, like, because they did, it was a whopper that kind of came at us, as far as like, the changes. So, as that stabilizes, then we could get more consistent and more predictable with what the changes will be.
But we're, to just to throw the, mention that, we're also, everything's changing. Not, not just the curriculum, but how you deliver it, which...
How you act.
Which then sort of changes, it's good and bad. It changes how you're delivering, but also changes how you're affecting the cost. It's not so much the, you know, it's not so much, "Oh, you bought the book, you're done."
That's over.
But it's more, well, it's the same thing. Like, you don't go buy Office now.
No.
You know, for 250 bucks, and you're done. You pay your annual fee, and it's just updating.
So, the Newsela is something that has really intrigued me. We also, like, this year, we have a subscription to Mystery Science. It's another, it's these dynamic online platforms, where it is, it's subscription-based, so it's an annual cost, and you know what it is, and it's predictable, and they chink up every year a little bit. But they are, they're not stagnant. So, when you, if we decide to go with Newsela, and we buy their curated program for grade five, social studies, well, every year, that curation of articles and resources and projects is reviewed and updated by Newsela. So, each year, you get a little bit of a different textbook. It's a little bit better, and it, it should be, I can't say this, but it should be a little bit better, and a little more updated, and a little more relevant. And I think that that's the piece that is so critical, is the days of the article from 1988 that perfectly matched the standards that you were teaching are over, because I can research and I can find an article instantaneously that might be more relevant. And Newsela provides a platform that they've already like, vetted them, they've taken the ads out of them, they've taken out anything that you might find that's not appropriate. And so, and then, they're documenting that here are some instructional tools that you could use to implement this in the classroom. So, there's, the teacher supports are there, you've got a curated, high-quality, a lot of times, a primary resource, and it's, and that, that increases the relevance to the students in front of them. So, I, six years ago, when I took this job on, and where I am now, and the amount of time I send, or spend using technology, is not what I ever would have predicted. I'm Steve Pellow, and I have lots of conversations, because is it textbook, is it technology? And I don't think I have anything anymore that's not got a link to technology.
So, two more things. One, for us, in thinking about discussing budgets and variability in budgets, particularly with Finance Committee and with Selectmen, I think we need to start queuing them in on this a bit, particularly since we have rather large, small swings in class size, meaning that if you, if, in other words, if you're paying a subscription fee, let's say, for grade five, well, this year, we're paying it for 20 kids, and next year, we're paying it for 40. Round numbers, you know, just because of this variability, because it's such a small school. So, that's just, and you'd say, "Well, okay, maybe it's $1,500 or $2,000." Well, $2,000 matters in our budget.
It does.
And all of a sudden, that might, you know, bump it up from 1.9 to 2.1 percent. Now, everyone's like, "Oh," you know. So, I think that's the one thing that I think's important. And then, the other thing, you know, I think it would be really useful, and not to sort of create more work, but I think it'd be really useful to get a little bit of a demo of what some of this stuff does.
All right.
Not just so that we have it, but so that the folks watching have it, and parents can see it, just because it sounds so, it sounds really interesting about what some of this stuff is being able to do, and so different than that textbook that we all carry back and forth to school.
Yeah.
And, and I think it's important for folks to understand that there's, all of this work is being done, and that is what some of this money that we put into the budget every year is going to, you know, is to try and coordinate it, and try and be able to really give, and really enhance the learning experience for these kids. So, that would be, that would be neat, after we get through budget. Right?
Details.
So, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I would just, as we keep moving further into this technology platform, and this might be just for Peter, are we, are we good with everything, so all students can access the Chromebooks and...
Even with the Power meters, the other day, Mike, it was interesting, I was looking at my Chromebook because of the, one of the servers was hooked up to the generator, so the building didn't have power, but I was still looking online and everything. Steve Pellow is so on top of every piece of equipment that's not only in this building, but across districts. And I sat down, I don't know, a week or so ago, and I said, "Steve, do I need anything?" And he said, "I'll, I'll give you a little look tomorrow."
Don't you help, Peter, let me do it, and we'll be all set.
Steve does a great job.
The knowledge that Steve has, and he's in the building a lot, too, because we have a nice little office for him.
Yeah.
So, he's around, he is always on top of, if there's anything building base that we need, he's, he's right there, so I do put an awful lot of faith in that man.
So, was that planned?
To put the...
No, well, that I'm sure was, yeah.
He did.
But to have one of the servers on the...
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Love it.
Yeah.
Yeah? Well, we might as well take, take it.
Stick man to it, yeah.
And it's, that generator's been a good idea, huh?
It's a good one.
This year?
It's a good one. It's a yes.
Already?
Yeah.
All right. Excellent.
So to continue along, if it's okay, the budget discussion, I'm going to save the enrollment for next. I'd like to go through the budget timeline that you all were sent out. So each year we develop a timeline so you have some idea of what to expect as we're building the budget going forward. The, as Pete and Melissa mentioned, I'm hoping that the principals and all the people who are kind enough to help me put the budgets, Christine and I and Jill to put the budgets together, will have it somewhere near Veterans Day. So they're all, we are all in a high energy focus on budgets at this point in time. So Melissa did her presentation on her portion of it. We'll have Steve and Marie coming next month and they'll talk a little bit about the impact of their, their areas of expertise and what impact that will have on the budgets for Denit. Pete is working at what is needed within the building. I'm sure he sent out surveys to the teachers in terms of supplies and what some of those requests are. Pete does a fantastic job of keeping the building up to date. The building always looks great, you know, and he comes in with, with good budget numbers always. You know, he's always very thoughtful in terms of his requests. So the, this time of year, we usually start the discussion with you about any positions or areas of interest that you would like us to make, make sure to stay focused on. There's a couple of things that we have been talking about in the other districts that I just wanted to share with you and to see if it is something that would also be of interest to Plimpton. There are two positions that we are looking to add in all of the elementary schools and that is to try and bring band back into the school day. So in Kingston this year, we were able to add a .4 teacher who is offering band during the school day to fifth and sixth grade students. And the hope is that after January, we also may be able to offer it to fourth grade. For those of you who've been around for a while, our veteran, let's just say, members, we used to have band during the school day. I actually am not 100% clear if that was true in Plimpton. Was it Donna? Because I couldn't remember. It was really, okay. Because I can't remember as clearly with Denit. In Kingston, I remember it vividly because it was quite an event at town meeting on the floor and at school committee meetings when it was cut because it was a massive budget cut for them. So that was about eight, 10 years ago when we had to cut it. Halifax also had to cut it and, and Denit did too, although I don't have clear a memory of when it happened.
It was long before that.
Long, okay. So it may have been before my time. So it was prior to 14 years ago. It is something that if you go to Thanksgiving Day game against Pembroke, watch the band from Pembroke. To be honest with you, it is phenomenal because they have a very robust elementary band program. So there's a feeder group that comes up and by the time they're getting to the high school, they have a very active band. For many students, band is, is for a reason for them to come to school. Music really is, is very important to them. So I don't know if that is something that is, would be considered a priority or is of interest to Plimpton, but Kingston does have band back in, during the school day again. Halifax, we've begun the discussion, no word yet on how they'll go with it. I just always like to, the opportunities we're giving, I like to have them be given equally. So it's just food for thought as a possibility. The other position that I have extremely strong feelings about is trying to bring in a nurse leader into the district. So nurses in our district, we have six of them, one in each building, nurses have a skill set and require supervision in an area that is really beyond our knowledge base. When I say that, I mean Pete and mine. We have a pretty good head on our shoulder, but we can't access SNAP, which is how they do all the input of their data on giving out the medications, their daily logs, everything is done by that. Because of FERPA, Pete can't access it, I can't access it. So the only person who can access it is the nurse. So it is somewhat difficult in terms of providing support and evaluation when we can't really access or see some of the work that is going on behind the scenes. Also policies and laws change and they just all work together, but they don't really have anyone who makes sure everybody is following things correctly. So it is something that many surrounding districts have a nurse leader in various capacities. I actually am hoping this week to send out a survey to my colleagues to see sort of the iterations that are out there. Some of them have it where it's a stipend a particular nurse would get. Some of them have half time people, some of them have a full time nurse leader. So I just don't really have a sense of numbers yet. My personal recommendation was to try to bring in a .5 nurse leader who would be responsible for oversight of all six nurses. So it would be a shared cost position. Part of the reason also, just so you know, I'm thinking .5 is I think we would have a reasonable chance of maybe finding a retired nurse who may be willing to come in where it wouldn't be a full time job, but would be a nice income, who is very knowledgeable and experienced, but could provide the supports we're looking for. It would go into the shared cost budget if, if this is of interest to all the schools. So just to sort of play with numbers, I'm just going to pick round numbers, okay? So let's say it's a $40,000 position, okay? It's a registered nurse, you know, with an administrative background, very experienced, so $40,000. It goes into the shared cost budget. So what that means is 50% of that cost is Silver Lake. Okay? So Silver Lake, it would cost Silver Lake $20,000 for the position. And then you have the other 20,000, which would be split equally among the three elementary schools based on the student enrollment. Of the 20,000, Kingston is 50% of that approximately. So they would pay 10,000. And then the other, am I counting right? Yes, I am doing this right. The other 10,000 would be split between Halifax and Plimpton. Halifax would be a probably 6,500, Plimpton would be about 3,500 or 7,000, 3,000. So it's a very small amount of money in terms of the impact on the budget. However, I believe for the safety and oversight, that is very helpful to our nurses and to all of our students and staff. I think it would be money very well invested. So that's a position I have pretty strong feelings and would like to advocate strongly for district wide. I don't know if there are some other things of interest. Pete and I really have not had a chance to sit down and go through some of the needs of the building. We will be spending lots of quality time together, but luckily we like each other very much. So, you know, we'll be talking a little bit more about if any other specific school needs that he has. But I didn't know if the committee had anything else.
So where did we end up with the roof repairs?
The major, what needed to be done is done.
Okay.
But again, like any other roof, it's not getting better with time.
No, but it should be better than it was before we did the work.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. And we have a fair amount of time before we can properly entertain.
Fund MSBA project or what? Well, it depends on.
I thought it shifted, didn't it?
It shifts based on the number of requests and the money available. So it isn't consistent from year to year. When I applied in Halifax, which was four years ago, I guess, it was 20,000, excuse me. Twenty, thank you. 20 years old. It had to be 20 years old. When I applied for Kingston last January, it had to be 27 years old. Now, it was based on the requirements of, of the money available and how many they could...
The number of roofs that were shoveled off was metal shovels?
Exactly, exactly. Also last year, MSBA didn't even approve windows, windows and doors. Now, they did for Halifax, but there was not enough money to give anything for windows and doors. MSBA, I believe, is mostly funded through lottery, if memory is serving me right. I think that is one of the main funding sources.
The governor's budget, what he originally put out for fiscal '21 had an increase in MSBA. They thought they were going to be able to decrease the amount of years a roof had before you could apply, but I don't know if that was rolled into the legislation at the Senate or the House.
I'm not 100% sure.
But it does mostly get funded by lottery.
By lottery, yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought I remembered because I was floored it went to 27.
Right.
So it is hard to know. You know, as I said, Pete's, Pete has done a fantastic job. You know, this is the building that really is, is extremely well maintained, you know, keeping everything up to date, so.
So with that in mind, because I would highly doubt it's going to become that many less years or that there's going to, that fixing roofs is going to become cheaper. So even if they do get more money, it's likely that will barely make up for how much more it, if, if you could even call it inflation, I mean, some of the prices for, for these jobs. But that's just one thing we need to sort of stay on top of because we did make it pretty clear to the town that, you know, we can't go for and fix this properly without getting that grant because the town doesn't have the money. So we just have to make sure we keep up with the maintenance and, and if there needs to be a little bit more in the budget to allow for proper maintenance, that would be something I think that should be thought of. I mean, I'm not talking about huge amounts, but you know, if you have an extra small sum there, that would be important because again, we have to make this last.
Exactly.
And then we have to make it last, even once we apply, we have to make it last for those number of years until we can actually get the project through it. Because I know it takes a long time.
It does.
I think the other piece is, we were going to do a safety assessment of the building?
So that is something that we could try to move up with the new police chief, Matt Clancy. And Dana spends a lot of time in the building. He's fantastic. So I will try to work with them and with Pete and add that into the agenda.
Because I think there's other things that are sort of on hold until we do that in order to make sure that we're doing things in the right order.
Yep.
About whether there's, and also in use of the building, you know, is there a better way to, you know, to secure the gym area so that it's more accessible, thus being able to utilize the building from a community perspective, but in a much safer way and so on and so forth. But also to make sure that we have the right, in other words, that we, that we take the right steps to better secure the building while also better provide the technology to help secure the building.
Yeah, so I'd agree with John that I have my feelings about band and nurse, but I defer to Peter with what he's done with the building and the budgets I've seen him present over the six years I've been on the committee. I feel very confident in his judgment. I would put physical plan, I think ahead of personnel, but I would look at both of those and come back with an honest idea of what you need to make next year and going forward successful. For the two items that you mentioned, Joy, the nurse leader is more of a priority to me than band.
Agreed.
And I know that's, you know, difficult to say that direct instruction to students is less important than the nurse leader. But the fact that Peter can't adequately supervise the nurse in the building because of FERPA, which I understand, you know, you need to protect the confidentiality of students' medical records, you know, that, that's concerning for, you know, just getting correct care for our students, but also for liability for our district and our town. That, that would be a huge priority for me over band. I do support us looking into band. I don't know if it would be a .2 or a .4 for Plimpton, but the nurse leader just, it's short money for our district. It makes a lot of sense. I know you're looking at the .5 right now, but I'd be very interested in seeing what data you get from some of your peers on the South Shore, how they're utilizing that position. Just, yeah, that, that's a critical area. I mean, we just, we all voted the first read of administering medication to students and we know that there's students who do receive medication here in the building. And I'd like a second set of eyes to be able to go over that data from time to time, make sure everything is, is going according to regulation and also the best care of the students.
Excellent.
I don't think there is any smaller, medium sized company out there that doesn't have some level of oversight over everything that they do. To, to not have that, and especially today where there is a fair amount more medication being given, but also, you know, let's look at it not just from the oversight piece, but for the support piece.
Absolutely.
You know, it, it goes both ways there to be able to have, so that the nurse has support and being able to go, oh, instead of trying to, you know, beg and borrow from a colleague, they can, they have someone they can go to with questions. So I would, I would echo.
Agreed.
The comments there, you know, and certainly for the band piece, you know, see what you think makes sense and we'll have to look at that from both from a budget perspective and all that. But the, the nurse piece seems, I'm not sure how we've gotten away this long.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, again, it's, it's, there is certainly evaluation and oversight. It's just a particular way it's logged in that particular type of program. We're not able to access.
Yeah, we're doing what we can.
Exactly.
But I don't, I think if you were to remove the specifics of it and say, this is how this is being done and this is the amount of oversight that's provided, it would be deficient.
Right.
By any, by any measure, you know, from, it's, it's just, because there's a chunk you just can't do.
Exactly.
And rightly so by law.
Exactly.
But.
Exactly, exactly. So continue to think of any other ideas that you have. We'll continue to build the budget. Pete and I will spend some quality time together. And we will make sure to build a budget that we can bring forward that, that will include as many things as are reasonable.
And just to, just to echo the point that Peter made earlier, clearly whatever Steve puts forward is going to be addressing the technology piece.
Absolutely, yep.
Because that is, as we've talked about just a while ago, I mean, it's such an integral part to this and it's something that this committee has been supportive of for a number of years here that, you know, it's really been imperative that we have to have the technology because that's what's coming and now we have it. So we'll look to Steve's recommendations of how we keep it moving forward.
And Steve will be at the next school committee meeting as will Marie. And so she'll give you some idea on those two other pieces. So that should hopefully continue the puzzle of building the budget for you. So October 1 enrollment, so this is pretty astounding for Denit. So Denit has increased 27 students this year, which is really astounding. Kingston is up 25 students and Halifax is down 22 students this year. So the elementary overall is up 30 students. Our middle school is down 11. Our high school is down 10. Our tuition students have increased by 10 at the high school. However, eight of them are Pathways program. You may remember, we started that 18 to 22 year old program for our students. So those are, eight of the tuition students are in our Pathways program. So it's pretty big changes for us in enrollment. So let's flip it over and John Tuffy always used to call this the I chart. So in the middle of the page, for those of you who have it, are the assessment percentages. So this will matter to the selectmen in particular. So for Silver Lake, in the middle of the page where it says FY assessment percentages, for 2020, you will see that Plimpton has remained exactly the same. You may wonder, how did we go up 27 students and the assessment remained exactly the same because it's based on our seven through 12 enrollment? So our seven through 12 enrollment stayed the same number, so our percentages.
We lost what we brought in, what we lost.
Yeah, exactly. Well, it's also based on the total enrollment of the students and all those wonderful things. Kingston, however, unfortunately for Kingston, increased by eight tenths of a percent. So Kingston's assessment will be a pretty dramatic increase. Halifax went down by eight tenths of a percentage. So Halifax is very happy. So that will have an impact on building the Silver Lake budget. On shared costs, now remember that nurse leader we talked about would go into this part of the budget, okay? And shared cost is that bottom column along the bottom. That was a great sentence, sorry.
But I understood it. I'm not sure what that's, which is worth.
Yeah, just after a while, you just start babbling. So the shared cost budget, so for Plimpton in 2020, you were 10.8 percentage of the union. Again, this is K through six. And in 2021, next year's budget, it will be an increase of 12.1. So for Plimpton, that's a 1.3 percentage increase. So that's pretty substantial for them. So their shared cost percentage will be higher because again, you've got those 27 students. Okay? So the shared cost budget, Amy, just so you know, is, a lot of that is my office. So it's Jill, it's Christine, it's Melissa, it's me, it's Marie Grable, it's Steve Pello. It is, if we get a nurse leader, they would be in that position. So they're the positions that are shared. Okay? So that's what it is. So everybody...
Buses, right, buses?
Buses are by district.
They are by district?
Yep.
How about nursing supplies?
By building.
Okay. I just thought of some of the things we've done.
We go out to bid for them. Yeah, we go out to bid. Yeah, we go out to bid because we get a better price.
And the shared cost is mostly personnel.
It's personnel, yeah. And my office.
And the building, right.
But I'd be really happy to move anywhere you'd like. Just say the word, I'm, I'm there.
As long as there's wood paneling?
Yes.
And a door.
And a door, and a door, yeah.
It would be just wood paneling.
She puts a door. She's, she's really picky, you should see hers. Yeah. So the shared cost is built on the number of students, okay? So that's, that's how that budget is built. So this is information that the towns will be looking to receive, I'm sure. Actually, now that I'm thinking about it, we should make sure to get that out, Christine. Probably should send it to the towns. Talk about who's, who's going to hit the email first. Anybody have any questions on our numbers?
Nope.
Okay, excellent. And then, let's see, rural aid. So we, you may remember, a little while ago, we put together a letter to support the rural aid initiative that has been going on to try to get some additional money for districts that qualify. Plimpton received some funding. It is not a massive amount of money, but any money is greatly appreciated. Of course, unfortunately, it seems to be coming with a ridiculous amount of paperwork, which is no, no great surprise. But the district is receiving $10,324. We will try really hard to not spend it all in one place. The idea of the money is to support rural aid initiatives. We already are a superintendency union, you already belong to a region. We don't have to spend it for that, but that was the concept, is trying to get small communities to become part of a superintendency union or become part of a region. We've already done that. So there isn't limitations on what the money can be spent. Pete and I have not really had an opportunity to talk about what some ideas are on this amount, but if the committee has some ideas of some areas, you know, there, it, it is not limited to initiatives to support regionalizing or becoming a superintensity union. Again, we've already met those criterias. But it, you know, again, it's not a massive amount of money, but, you know, we've got a playground we're trying to put in, might be really helpful to have a little extra money, get a little bit more flooring in, you know, the, the rubber mat in. You know, there's always things within the building that we could do. It's, again, not massive amount of money. We haven't received the first 50% of it, I believe, yeah. We have already received the check, so we have $5,000 burning a hole in our pocket. But it is there, and it doesn't, it is not earmarked, I guess is probably the best way of saying it, because again, we've already done the main part. And then I'll just, we'll have to figure out sort of a creative writing assignment to explain our, our use of it, which is fine.
So I just know that, and I appreciate the idea of potentially holding it back for our playgrounds, but I also want to acknowledge that we've spoken in the past couple of meetings about the dwindling funds from federal Title I, II, and III. And I know that Melissa and Jill have worked to keep Plimpton involved in that PD and summer school work and reaching out to the students in high speeds in our school district. I don't think it would be that idea potentially to look at maybe how we can use some of those funds to meet some of the dwindling federal funds for PD and Title I-type services. I know it's a one-time number, and it's not going to really amount to much, but just the Title I loss that we saw, you know, Melissa said it was $132,000, no, wait, $13,200 decrease?
$120,000.
$120,000, okay, thank you. So that, that's about $13,000, us, if we take 11% of it, Miss Plimpton, this almost fits into that a little bit. And I know you have other ideas and you're pursuing other grants, and I appreciate all that hard work and paperwork that you're, you're putting into it. So playground, absolutely. It would give us a nice cushion potentially, but if we don't spend it, I'd like to see it looked at for PD for our teachers and staff, and also looking out for Title I.
So to that end, do we have to spend it all this year, or is it, in other words...
I have a forms, because grants love forms, that goes into lots of detail, so it's sort of amid the pile of other things that I'm really looking to begin doing.
Like the budget?
Yeah. It's in the pile.
It has to be spent by Tuesday.
It's got to be spent by Tuesday of 2020. Perfect.
So it is an FY20 spend.
Yeah.
It's an FY20 spend. And then you have to have a, you also have to have a plan outlining steps the district will take to increase the regional collaboration and solidification.
Yeah, that's, that's the one that's already...
And when I originally read it, that's where my email came from, is knowing that we do PD across Union 31 and across Silver Lake. And I just thought this could potentially be something we look at, you know, obviously aim it towards our population, bring in the union. I know we all take care of each other when we have different things going on in the buildings. And PD is an area we've been focused in on quite a bit. I know we increased the amount of money in our budget last year for teachers to take their graduate courses in order to recertify with the state, especially with how many newer teachers we have who are pursuing master's degrees to keep their certification, move to professional licensure. $10,000 won't go very far, as we've said, but it could go a decent distance towards addressing PD-type events.
No, but there are things like just, if you, if the money went in to cover the expense of the teachers who were doing the writing grant, then that money rolls over in Title I to the next year. So this can't roll.
Right.
But the Title I can roll for two or three years. So there's, there's potential opportunities to actually hold on to this money for longer by using it to spend out things that we've already planned. Those are creative ways that I've used with funds, is looking, what can roll and what can't roll? Let's pay the things now that we know we've already, so we can roll, and then we can at a later date decide that, oh, there's a speaker or something.
And I think it'd be easier to write the paperwork for DESI if it was used that way versus site work for our playground that are...
Because they're, I mean, because you can easily tie that argument that, you know, you're doing this work because we didn't qualify for it, but it contributes overall to the region because it's, everyone's getting the same training.
Right.
And, yeah.
So we'll, we'll work on this. As I said, it's not a massive amount of money, but at least we did receive something, so all donations gratefully accepted, and...
Kind of ran for a letter, that's what you did.
Yeah, no, it was, it was really good. We'll, we'll keep you informed on this, and we'll keep working with Pete and Melissa and Jill, and we'll have no trouble at all coming up with some ideas. That's all I have, thank you.
It's too bad Steve isn't ready to put in that direct fiber.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's where I'd say to also look at putting, but I know we're just investigating it at this point.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? No? All right, well, thank you, everyone, for, for joining us here tonight. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.